Okay. I would like to call this meeting to order. Thank you for joining us for the board meeting for Grand Rapids Public School District. Today is Monday, December 16th. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Reverend Mathias, can we please have the roll call?
Yes, Reverend Mathias is here. Mr. Ross.
Present.
Ms. Shadke.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Baker.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Flores.
Present.
Ms. Lewis is excused. President Grant.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. For my colleagues and for anyone who have joined us, we do have a note from the interpreter to please speak into the mic so that she can interpret for everyone. Next, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you. We are going to start the evening with celebrations.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask Mr. Kurt Johnson to come forward. This evening, he will be sharing our annual holiday e-card from the Superintendent and the Board of Education. Mr. Kurt Johnson is also with Ms. Maggie Malone. Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, Madam President, Grant, Superintendent Dr. Ronald Gorman, and distinguished board members. Wow, can you believe it? At the halfway point in the school year, which means that we're at holiday break time. And so, we have a special treat for you in fine tradition that we will continue on with, a collaboration between staff and students on our district holiday greeting card. And so, I would like to turn it over to Maggie to talk about some of the mechanics of how it all came together and who was involved.
Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, and it's great to be here and great to see everybody today. We have a lot of very famous people in our audience today. We have several of our GRPS artists and singers, so we're excited. We have several schools here represented that you will see in the card when it's played and we'll have them stand and be recognized after the video plays. We also have the music. We had students go into the recording studio. We had the Jewel Tones from City under the direction of Mrs. Cara Degenhart, and the studio is owned by Deborah Perry. That's Joint Air Studio, and so Deborah produced the recording for us today, and she's our music teacher at Coit. Cara teaches at City, and she also is a choir teacher at U-Prep as well. So, we're super excited. Students across the district can submit artwork. This year, we had a winter theme, so we're really excited. We think it came together really well, and I think that's enough of my talking, and maybe you can see it, and then we can get these amazing artists up here to get some recognition and shake your hand. Are you guys okay? If we start over. Excellent. So, when you hear your school called, would you please stand up if you are the artist or the art teacher or the principal? If you are from Alger Middle School, Buchanan Elementary, C.A. Frost Middle High, Sessor Chavez Elementary, Coit Creative Arts Academy, Harrison Park, Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Academy, North Park Montessori, and Southwest Community And we have Mrs. Degenhart here representing the Jewel Tones and Ms. Dove Perry here. If you are, and yes, if you are a parent of one of these amazing students, could we please recognize you?
Right.
Excellent. Okay, if you are an artist, would you please stand up? And we're going to have you come down here and go start on this side, and you're going to shake everybody's hand.
Happy holidays from us to you.
Happy holidays.
Okay, that was absolutely wonderful. Madam President and members of the board, I would like to ask Matthew Beresford to come forward. He will be discussing this evening the Kiwanis Dictionary donation. Mr. Beresford.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, President Grant, and members of the board. Honored in this midpoint of the school year to also celebrate this partnership that we have with the Kiwanis and how they celebrate every third grader across our elementaries. So, tonight, I have President Dick Post of the Golden K Kiwanis, Dan Williams of the Grand Rapids Kiwanis, and Long Ho of Grand Valley Circle K Club, and he's a sophomore there. So, I'll turn it over to Dan Williams first.
Thanks for having us here this evening, and it's our honor and privilege to be here. We appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit, but on behalf of the Grand Rapids Kiwanis Club, Golden K Kiwanis, and Circle K of Grand Valley, this is, we're going on our 14th year of donating these books to the third graders, and it's something that we take a lot of pride in. So, the goal of the program is to assist all students in completing the school year as good writers, active readers, and creative thinkers by providing students with their own personal dictionary with a great Gazette tier. So, if you need to look up Gazette tier, you could either Google it or grab your dictionary and look that up. Serving the children of the world is our motto of all Kiwanis, and young children priority one is the theme of the Kiwanis International. So, thanks again for having us here tonight.
Hi, greetings to everyone. I'm really honored to be here. I came from, I'm not from the Grand Public School, I'm more from Wyoming Public School District. But as a student in Grand Valley, I was honored to be a part of Circle K International, which is a college level of the Kiwanis Family International Organization. And what we do is, we pick on one particular day, and we, me and a couple other member of the Circle K member, we came in and helped put in personalized sticker name. As you can see, the student will have their own name tag into these books, and, well, I don't think it's a lot of work. It's really just incredible to see that all these books will go to a student in the third grader. It's a really cool project, and I'm looking forward to participate in the next couple years for more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I get to talk?
Hi. I think the last time I was in front of a public school official was some 80 years ago. That was the principal. But, no, it was, I'm blushing. Last week, Peter and I went to Child Life Development School, is that, and gave the dictionaries to the third graders, two classes there, and it was a joy. Smiles on their face. I'm going to get a little emotional, can you imagine? Anyway, there was one gal, one girl, who older sister received a dictionary a couple years ago, and this girl seemed to retain, grab hold of that dictionary. So, when it came time to give her her dictionary, I read her name and told her, "This belonged to you," and just a big smile. It's a big pleasure to be able to donate these dictionaries to all the third graders. Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure too.
Yes.
Make sure that these get to students.
Absolutely.
We don't know.
You're all right. I will pay anybody's pass.
I do. I do, thank you.
We have our own cousin choose.
Thank you. Thank you for putting my name in as well. I appreciate it. Thank you. Wonderful. Thanks for everything.
Can you spell it for us now?
What word?
We would.
It's not super.
But you'll have to go home and get it from one of your kids.
Madam President, members of the board, I'd like to ask John Helmhold to come forward. He will be discussing a donation to schools this evening. Mr. Helmhold.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, President Grant, members of the board. It's my honor to be here today with Alex Hicks, who surprised us not too long ago when he approached the district and specifically President Grant about an interest in making a personal donation to support our schools. And thanks to his generosity, there were four schools that were given $350 each to use however they wanted to support the teaching and learning and the needs of the school. The schools are Burton Elementary, Mulick Park Elementary, Dickinson Academy, and Martin Luther King Junior Leadership Academy. For each school, Burton purchased reusable water bottles for every student. Dickinson put their money towards stocking up on uniforms. MLK purchased weighted compression vests, whistles, HearTech kids earmuffs, and a megaphone. And Mulick purchased an ABC carpet and beanbag chairs. Alex met with the principals personally and delivered those donations, and we just want to celebrate him and his generosity and for thinking of our kids. So, thank you, Alex. You want to say a few words?
Yes. Greetings, Madam President, members of the board. It's an honor to be in front of you here. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to help bless these kids. Just quickly, you know, I'm not a product of the Grand Rapids Public School system, but this is where the Lord has led me, you know, to use my efforts. Just recently, I've started, you know, a life change kind of, and just the drive to be a community servant leader has really been heavy on my heart. This was something that was kind of put together last second, and thankfully through Facebook, I was able to reach a lot more people than originally I had anticipated. But, yeah, I'm thankful for the opportunity to help bless these kids, and I look forward to, you know, hopefully this isn't the last time I sit in front of you guys. Also, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to my church, LifeQuest Community Outreach Center. If anybody here needs a church home, we do church 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock at 10:50 Fisk over by Martin Luther King. We do church, not change, or we do change, not church, sorry. Don't tell my pastor I messed that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that it was really amazing to me to see how far $350 goes to our schools and just the question of being asked, "What do you need?" So, that was an emotional moment for me when I saw the principal's responses coming through and saying, "Wow." You know, like, "You needed water bottles for the kids." That made sense. Or, "You needed compression vests for students who learn a little bit differently or have different needs, and what a difference that will make in their day-to-day learning." So, it was really amazing to see someone who's coming from outside of our district but having the heart to really just ask the question, "What do you need?" So, thank you again very much, Alex. We appreciate it.
Okay. Next, we are going to move to our student representatives. Let's start with Ms. Val Mincho.
All right. Well, hi, everyone. Just the 12th, we had our second district student council, and the highlight of everything, I think, was the athletes at Ottawa Hills expressed their appreciation on the new gymnasium. They stated how easy it was for them to practice now, and that with that, they hope to take care of the new gym. I also want to highlight the lunch and learn that happened at the Grand Rapids Learning Center where the third board commissioner, Sunita Linear, came in, and she gave a presentation and speech on her part. And lastly, I'd like to share my personal celebration that I have been accepted to all of the universities that I applied to. Just now, I decided to apply to YOVA, so hopefully I can hear back from them. And, thank you. And that I also passed as a semifinalist for the Dell Scholarship, so hopefully I get chosen for the finals and maybe even win the scholarship. So, that's off my part.
Ms. Vincent.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lamaria. I'm a student from City High School. As she said last week, we had our student district council meeting, and at the meeting, we discussed some celebrations from different schools. So, at Grand Rapids Montessori, the econ club is researching and writing essays on climate change. They're also doing projects on dystopian features, and on Wednesday, they will be doing a gallery walk, and they're inviting the elementary school to come out and view the projects as well. At U-Prep, students are working on service projects and care packages to give to people in need. And over the weekend, Ottawa Hills hosted the I-96 Holiday Classic at City High School. Union and Ottawa both represented GRPS, and they both have victories over their opponents. The last celebration is from City High School. This week, Harvard will be coming to City to study our school's practices in improvement and leadership, and I have a letter from the principal that I'll be reading to further explain that. Harvard is coming to create a new course for educational leaders and is working with City to study our best practices in school improvement and leadership. City stood out as an exemplar in the research process for a focused school as we have continued to achieve at the highest levels even as we've grown in size and significantly diversified our student body. Of interest to the professors and researchers is our overachieving leadership and improvement strategies, including our shared leadership framework and efforts to create a stronger sense of belonging for our more disadvantaged students and at-risk students within our school population. To accomplish that, we have focused on several specific leadership approaches, which we have employed with success that are of interest to Harvard. Our shared collaborative leadership structures, student-led initiatives, student-centered programming, and school climate and culture development.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, do we have public comment for board agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. We have no secretary's report this evening, is that correct?
That is correct, we don't.
Okay. We will move to our committee chair updates. Dr. Baker for the Academic Achievement Committee.
Okay. Yes, the Academic Achievement Committee met last week? Two weeks ago? And we actually just discussed the language instructional audit for how we do English, well, how we teach students who are non-native English speakers. So, that would include either ESL bilingual other strategies and coming to some understanding. And we did that so we could pass it on to the Finance Committee to consider purchasing the research team to do that work. We were really impressed with the conversation, and I know it also goes into trying to expand the access to Southwest Community Campus, having other students consider the possibility of learning bilingual education rather than ESL, but we will be entertaining the community's input on that. So, that was our conversation. In January, we have an important, our January date will be the 8th, I believe, the 1st, the 2nd Wednesday, the 1st Wednesday is the 1st, so we do not have a meeting on that day. But we're going to be discussing math instruction in the district, especially in regards to considerations that the state is having conversations about getting rid of the Algebra II requirement and what implication that could have, and how we as a board should be prepared to respond to that conversation.
Thank you. Mr. Ross for the Finance Committee.
Yeah, the Finance Committee, there were just a couple action items in your packet. We did meet just earlier this afternoon. Only, I guess, really think of no question answered. One of the action items on the purchasing agenda was regard to an increased purchase blanket order, I should say, for legal services. There were some questions about that. That was largely related to some of the efforts associated with the North Park situation, so just an increase in legal fees there. There was another question earlier, our last Finance Committee meeting, about the Applied Linguistics Services that we are contracting. Just FYI, that's going to be an assessment of our, excuse me, needs assessment for our bilingual programs that's going to take place in February. Those folks are going to come to town in February and do a complete assessment of our bilingual services, identify any gaps, offer any recommendations, things of that nature. And then, we also just had an update on our bond and seeking fund and our general financials. Just FYI to you, as far as our bond and seeking fund dollars that were committed for this year, we're about 58% through those dollars for the construction. As far as technology components, about 83% of that has been committed and moving forward. And then, the safety and security elements, right about the halfway point. And otherwise, the general information is in your packets. If you have any particular questions, of course, I can field those and get some help from Mr. Oberus because he likes to be involved. So, well, that's it then.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I will ask Mr. Helmhold to join me for a Promise Zone Authority update.
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Gorman, we had our second meeting of the Promise Zone, Grand Rapids Promise Zone Authority Board, and after a lengthy presentation of the details and everything that's within the law that the board would have to make decisions on, it was almost a four-hour meeting where there were facilitated conversations, stickers were put on the different voting opportunities, and in the end, the Promise Zone Authority Board voted to move forward with a development plan that would begin the process of granting scholarships for this year's graduating class of 2020. At this point, that plan is being drafted. We will submit it to Treasury for their review in advance of that vote, make sure we've got all the i's dotted and t's crossed so that if and when the Promise Zone Authority Board votes, we can submit it to Treasury for hopefully quick approval, because obviously here we are just a few months away before the end of the school. There's some fundraising that has to occur. We are required by state law to raise the funds in year one and year two. This would be for an associate degree or certification through Grand Rapids Community College for all high school graduates that are residents in the city of Grand Rapids who graduate from a high school that is physically located within the city limits. And there, we will begin the process of communicating, marketing to all the class of 2020 about this opportunity. We have already been meeting with Grand Rapids Community College and exploring some potential opportunities with them in advance, and this is just the beginning. Many of the Promise Zones across the state start with the bare minimum of what the law requires. That triggers the first year of the tax capture, so that was one of the driving reasons behind why they acted so swiftly was that if they did not, there'd be about $650,000 in tax capture left on the table, not just in year one, but in every year moving forward. And so, this makes a lot of financial sense. We are confident in the ability to raise the funds. We have a few of the board members have already kind of given their verbal confirmation of assurance that the funds will be there so that those graduates of 2020 can be guaranteed that they'll have that associate's degree paid for at Grand Rapids Community College. The board, I don't have the date right in front of me. There's an executive committee meeting coming up in the first part of January, and then a few days later, they are expected to vote, and we'll have additional information to update for the board at that time.
We also voted that there would, and we need to take the official vote, but we had conversation, we used stickers, as Mr. Helmhold said, about grade requirements, or, and Dr. Gorman, you can jump in as well, about grade requirements. The general consensus was that there would be no grade requirement for our students, that we didn't want to rule any students out. Also, that this is something that could be used if students went to school part-time, that you do not have to be full-time, you had to be at least part-time, but that there was perhaps...
Five years.
Up to five years, and that there is a certain time period if students need to take off and take a break. I believe there was a really clear consensus that we do want to grow from here as far as what we provide students, but it was very important to us to extend something to this class as well as kick off that tax capture, which is why we committed... class, as well as kick off that tax capture, which is why we committed to what we knew we would be able to do. There's also been conversation about everyone who sits on the board making some level of financial commitment that is appropriate for them where they are, but making sure that every board member has some skin in the game, not only just in fundraising from others, but personally from themselves as well. Dr. Gorman?
You know, just to piggyback off that, this is, this is a start, this is a great start. This provides, of course, higher education for this year's class, which we're very excited about. But this, this is a start, right? The, the end is, we want four-year scholarships for all students in the city. We're starting small, so we can capture this group, but our ultimate goal is four years of education for all students who live in the city of Grand Rapids.
So, how is this announcement happening, or, how's the word getting out that we can get some money to our students?
Sure. You know, this, obviously, the, the board made a decision to kind of expedite the, the development plan. I think what, now, we're going to keep our powder dry until Treasury gives the approval. So, we need the, there, obviously, we anticipate another round of media relations, if and when the Promise Zone Authority Board votes to approve the development plan, which is what we anticipate will happen. And once that gets submitted to Treasury, they have up to 60 days to respond. We expect that they're going to respond quickly. We've already been in conversation with them. We already have a draft of the development plan. At that point, is when we anticipate a big, large media splash, press conference and everything we can. We're already gearing up communications to go to all 22 high schools to make sure that they are aware that this is likely coming down the pipe. So, we're already in communication. We're kind of in the soft-launch campaign right now, until which time Treasury gives the approval.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helmuth. Next, we have action items. We will start with the superintendent's evaluation, and I will hand things over to Vice President Shaki.
Thank you, President Grant. Well, this evening, excuse me, the board had the opportunity to conclude our evaluation of Superintendent, Dr. Gorman. Dr. Gorman has been our interim superintendent since July 1st of this year, and according to his contract and to board policy, we need to conclude the evaluation by December 31st. So, therefore, Dr. Gorman has provided to us, the Board of Education, evidence of performance tasks and student growth data using the school advance model, the same model that our district uses for all of our Grand Rapids Public Schools administrators. Based on the evidences provided by Dr. Gorman and our board's observations of his performance, it is my privilege to share that the board has officially given Dr. Gorman the highly effective label, which will be reported to the state of Michigan. So, on behalf of the Board of Education, I thank you, Dr. Gorman, for the contributions you've made to lead our students, our staff, and this community. So, this evening, President Grant, I'll look for a motion to approve the superintendent's evaluation effectiveness label as highly effective.
Support?
Support.
Reverend Mathias?
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Gra, Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, excuse, President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Excuse me. President, I'd just like to thank Ms. Shaki, because this is a big job, doing this superintendent evaluation, and also, Mr. Ross, for his work in transitioning to this new format from our old one. So, it's a lot of work that, you know, things were so smooth today tonight, and so, that's because of the work of you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely, I second that. Next, we will move to our purchasing agenda. Was there any discussion or questions concerning the purchasing agenda? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support?
Support.
Reverend Mathias?
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, excuse, President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have our annual banking, banking resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Reverend Mathias?
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, excuse, President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping?
So moved.
Support.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, excuse, President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. We have a few quick discussion items for this evening. I wanted to be sure that I provided an update on the superintendent search. So, we are just a few weeks away from the application deadline, which is January 5th. We, I wanted to make sure that you all know, we do have several applicants that have either completed the process or who have started the application and are moving through it. We do think that several people will complete that application process once the holiday break has begun. We have applicants from about 12 of the 50 states right now. It's a very diverse group, a few more women than men, but from really diverse backgrounds. So, that's encouraging. So, reminder that the application deadline is January 5th. Individuals are welcome to go to GRPS.org under the quick links and use superintendent search to find that application. Our goal, as a board, is to review interview questions, procedures, and top candidates for the first round at a January 23rd work session. First-round interviews are scheduled to take place Saturday, February 8th, beginning at 8:30 a.m. Then, the board is scheduled to meet on February 10th to determine those second-round interviews. We anticipate finalists will visit the district on February 17th, with second-round interviews taking place that evening at 6:00 p.m. If the board is not ready to make a decision on the 17th, then an alternate meeting date will be determined at that time. I will also provide a board update in writing through email for you all. Any questions about that process? Okay, wonderful. Next, we have a reminder for the board's annual organizational meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, January 6th, at 6:30 p.m. So, I look forward to seeing you all then. Also, a reminder to give some thought to what committees you may be interested in for next year, and the board president for next year will reach out to you all to make appointments for those, but it's wonderful to start thinking about that now, where you would like to be, if there's a new place that you would like to try out, or, I think we've done some amazing work this year through committees, which is really encouraging to see. So, just thinking about if you like where you are. But that is a quick reminder. Do we have public comment for non-agenda items?
We do not.
Wonderful. Superintendent's comments?
No comment.
Dr. Flores?
No comment.
Dr. Baker?
No, I'm glad, glad we have a successful six-month superintendent reign, and you definitely, definitely deserve your highly effective rating. Appreciate all your work. Glad.
Ms. Davis?
I'd just like to second what Dr. Baker just said, and just thank you for all the work you've done.
Mr. Ross?
No comment.
Ms. Shaki?
It was just so fun to watch the students and the pride that they had in their work. It was great to look quickly at the photo of their work and then see their faces in the crowd. You could tell who the student was before they were ever introduced. So, just thank you, Ms. Malone, and all the staff that worked on that project, and all those that brought the students to us tonight. Such a joy, as a school board member, to just see our kids happy and smiling. So, I wish you very happy holidays, and to all of our staff, I wish you great respite for these two weeks. Enjoy.
Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, just, I'm just really blown away by what Mr. Helmuth reported in regards to the potential for all of our kids to get at least an associate's, and, and it's, and it's going to get better, and just what, what that means for our city, the affirmation that our kids are so important to us, that we're willing to invest monetarily for their future, and to guarantee them that they, that they can reach their dreams. And, and I echo what was said, it's really exciting to see the artwork in our district, not just artwork, but then, the arts and, and just the excitement that, that our kids and our parents, the many hours that parents put into the kids' performance. That whole list of activities that's taking place is amazing at this district. So, very kudos to all the work that's going on in the district.
Ms. Williams?
Just want to celebrate the teachers and staff for the hard work this year. We're at a halfway point. Please enjoy your holidays. Thank you so very much. And, Dr. Gorman, thank you so much for leading us through this difficult time, and we are grateful for the input that you shared with us tonight about things for us to look for in a new superintendent.
Thank you. Well, happy holidays. Meeting is adjourned.